Good morning guys, how's it going? It's Monday, a new vlog. I am ready to tell. I've just got out of the shower and thought I'd start this vlog a little differently. I'm just finishing off my morning routine with some SPF moisturiser. How's everyone going? I hope you're well. I've got a few little assignments and things to do today that are coming up soon. So I thought I'd do those this morning. Guys, I just thought I'd show you my study at home fit. It's literally like sweatpants with a matching knit. Cause I just want to be super cosy today when I'm studying and it's a pretty average day out there. Guys, I had some washing last night, which I need to hang out. What's up guys, how's it going? It's nine o'clock and I'm just starting my day with my Ambos questions. I'm just getting them in my on my computer. What's up guys, I've just finished five Ambos questions. Took me an hour to like fully dissect them, I guess. I'm just looking, it is raining out there. Anyways, as I was saying, I finished five questions. It took me an hour to just dissect every question. I didn't do very well today. I only got one question right, so. That's, it is what it is. That's why I'm doing this, because I'm learning as I go. I took notes on today. I did questions on androgen insensitivity syndrome, severe bacterial keratitis, a question on congenital rubella infection, a question on Chiari two malformation, and a question on ischemic stroke structures affected. So yeah, that's what my five questions were today. I think that was it, yep. What's up guys, how's it going? I'm aware this is a terrible angle. I'm just on my breakfast break finishing an episode of Suits. And some mail came, so I'm pretty sure this is a suturing kit that we had discount on from uni, so I ordered one. Oh yeah, has the tools. This is full of suture threads and blades. And then it has this reusable practice, whatever you wanna midiggy call it. Oh my god, this is such a weird texture. So you can practice like different sutures on different skin incisions, I guess. Then I got the by Terry Barn de Rose. I've wanted one of these for so long. Everyone says they're the most amazing lip balm. It's in the little limited edition summer packaging, which I thought was super cute. And then I got the RMS Beauty Uncover Up Concealer. I'm looking for like some really lightweight concealers. And I've heard this one's really good. And then I got the NARS, I've heard heaps of good reviews about this. The NARS Afterglow Palette. Oh my god, how cool is this packaging? You can see the camera sitting there. Dun 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 dun. Look at this. So this is, these are the colours here. They're absolutely stunning, some of my favourites. What's up guys? I was just talking to a friend on the phone to organise, to do some like assignments, work through some assignments together that we've got coming up, mostly just some case histories. We're gonna do that at some point, but right now I'm just watching some lectures. So I thought I'd just let you come and be productive with me. What's up guys, I've just finished my lunch and I finished watching some lectures. And in about an hour and a half, we're gonna find out if we get to come out of level three lockdown on Wednesday night, or if we have to stay in it longer. I'm predicting that we're gonna have to stay in it longer because the cases are still showing up in the community. So it's okay, we're all here to do our part. And uni's gonna be online until middle end of September anyways. So it's not really gonna affect me in terms of uni if we go into level two now this week or not for a few more weeks. So we'll just wait and see what happens. But it's the afternoon now, so I'm just gonna watch some more lectures. I will catch you guys when I'm being productive. Based on the advice of the Director General, we believe that confidence can be built over the course of this week. That is why the Director General has recommended to Cabinet and Cabinet has agreed to apply a short extension of level three restrictions in Auckland until 11pm, 11:59pm this Sunday, thirty August. So if you saw that, we're stuck in lockdown until the end of the weekend, which was what I predicted. And then still no more gatherings of more than 10 after that. I moved her bed so she can have a sunbath. Look at her. She's having a nap. She loves sunbathing. What's up guys, I'm still sitting here just studying today. I just don't wanna have this vlog be super boring, full of time lapses of me studying. So we're just gonna snap and go to the future when I'm doing something fun and exciting, like taking the dog for a walk or making dinner. Because this is not that exciting to watch, I feel like. So it's 3:35, I'm gonna keep studying for a bit and then probably take the dog for a walk and also cook dinner. I'm making like miso pork on rice with broccoli for dinner tonight, which will be nice. So yes, see you guys when I'm doing something fun. Guys, I completely forgot that I had a compulsory lecture online from four to five. So I'm just doing this now.
Points that Tom Pasley would have talked about. And that is when you're taking history in general.
What's up guys, I just finished that live lecture on history taking. What I'm gonna do now is it's five o'clock. I'm gonna try and start writing up a case history because we have one due next Friday. So I'm just gonna go and look at the framework for that. This is my red book. It's essentially, I've covered it and like put stickers on it, which was first year med school me thinking I was like so cool. So I'm just gonna read through this chapter and just figure out kind of what I need to do, how I can frame my case history. Anyway, so I'm gonna get started on that and then I'm going to cook some dinner. I think I am mistaken the dog for a walk just because I have a lot of work to get through. So we actually, I just realised I have a lecture I can watch on how to write a history. So I'm gonna watch this lecture, which is approximately an hour, and then try and write up a case history. What's up guys, I've just finished a really huge day of study. It's just after six. I'm actually not going to study anymore tonight because my brain is like but I am gonna do some cooking. I'm kind of winging it, I'll show you what I'm doing. I'm essentially just gonna get rice and miso maple pork, just sounded good. Capsicum, broccoli and a bit of onion. What's up guys, I just had a cup of peppermint tea. And I'm doing my first case history assignment. I'm about a third of the way through. Good morning guys, it's Tuesday. Sorry, I completely forgot to say goodnight to you last night. I just got carried away doing uni work and then I just went to bed and like completely forgot. But it's Tuesday and it is eight thirty, so I've got a class, live class at nine. So I've like picked that this morning. I've got a live class at nine. So I think I'm just gonna make a smoothie for breakfast. Okay guys, you might not like the look of this. It's very interesting colour. I haven't actually made one like this before, so we'll give it a taste. But this is what it looks like. You can really see the spinach and the turmeric coming through. So I'm just gonna put in a straw. You can definitely like taste the spinach a little bit, but I quite like it. The strawberry's nice. Mmm. It's good. Let's get ready for class. So you might be wondering why I haven't been sitting at my desk. Like you probably haven't been wandering, no one cares. But it's so, you can see how dark it is over there and how it faces the wall. And it's just, I feel really unproductive and unmotivated when I sit over there. So I just wanted to show you my Zoom setup for my live class this morning. This is how we've got it. So I have my Zoom on my computer and that'll be me on the camera, whatever. Then I'll have my iPad with me taking notes. And then I've got like water, my phone, the pen, my clinical manual book, this one, and my breakfast. So that's how we're hanging out this morning. We start in about 10 minutes. And of course it's raining outside again, which is great. We're just waiting for everyone to come.
This thing is so fair.
And I'm gonna put a game on while we're waiting. What's up guys, how's it going? Oh, it's super gross and rainy outside and it's super cold in here. So I've just turned on the heater. We just finished our class. I had like an hour and a half class on ethics. It was super interesting, like everyone has different subconscious bias and different views on what's like the right thing to do in a situation or the wrong thing to do, or the steps you should take, the steps you shouldn't take, that sort of thing. So I think I'm just going to watch a YouTube video, take a break, make a cup of tea. Oh, and then make a list of what I wanna do today and get started. Let's get productive, productive. I wanna be productive, no more procrastination. What's up guys, it's time to be productive. I'm chucking on some lectures and getting started. It's, I finished my class at 10:40, it's 11:30 now. So I've had about an hour's break. Me and the dog have got our cosy sweaters on. Look at her cosy sweater. Anyways, let's get started. What's up guys, I'm so sorry for how boring this vlog is. It's really horrible weather, so I can't even like go outside. I really wanna like go to the beach, go out man eating, go for walks, but it's just not nice. And now I'm gonna do a lecture on pneumonia. So I look like a mess, which is fine. But Summer and I ordered some stuff from the Deadly Ponies Archive Sale. And she always gets stuff shipped to my house because she doesn't have a letterbox. So I'm pretty sure that's what this is because there's two packages, the same size, one for me, one for Summer. Summer got a bag and I've got some belts, so let's have a look. And then inside this box. But that's so cute, so I've got a plain black one. Same in brown and python. I wonder if I can like show you this up close. And it's that beautiful brown and black python. What's up guys, sorry for the quick brief interruption from my lecture. But I just got a really cool delivery, which you would have just seen. And also I was looking online during my lunch break at Skims and there was some stuff I wanted to get, but the delivery is literally seventy Kiwi dollars. I just, I can't. But I could ship them to my auntie's house because my mum is coming home soon. Guys, I figured it out. My mum is over in the States, so I'm gonna get some Skims ordered to my auntie's house, who lives over there. And my mum is gonna go to my auntie's house before she comes home and pick it up. So I've ordered some Glossier products and some Skims because the Glossier doesn't ship here and the Skims shipping here was so expensive. Guys, I don't wanna show you my shares, but I do wanna show you how much percent they're up at the moment. Ten point six nine percent is how much my shares are up. That's wild, it's doing so well at the moment. I've watched, I've been to one and a half hours of class and I've been, I've watched one and a half lectures.
Nice!
Well, one and a half. She's losing her Deadly Ponies virginity.
Half price, look at that.
We don't need to show them the price. This is it, this is the moment. How, oh my god, bro, look at this outfit. Look at this outfit.
Where's the fucking strap?
It'd be inside. Look at this outfit though, pink on pink on pink.
Oh, doggy. Oh, sweet baby. Which is better?
The dog. We're about to start doing some work.
Should I tag Deadly Ponies?
Yes. Um, we're about to start doing some work. And we're gonna do a case history, finish the case history. And there's a lab that we've gotta do. So have a little study session, study session. Let's get productive, productive. I wanna be productive. Let's get productive. We just finished.
Oh my god, that was really hard. Now I get to delete so many pages, but so happy. What do you do, sore throat lolly?
Uh, lozenge? I'll have to look at my, in my first date, I'll have a look. Guys, we've finished our, oh, we've finished our case history. Oh, oh, oh. We've finished our case history. How good though.
Man, we've got so much shit still to do.
Are we gonna do our lab?
Me as well, fucking here.
Shall we email these off?
Because I haven't really watched any lectures. No, I don't know who to email it to, that's what, they haven't told us yet.
Oh, okay. So we've got, I've gotta do a BLS pre-test, but that's like before BLS.
What, do we all have to do it?
I think before you do BLS, you do a pre-test. Then we've done hematology lab quiz, there's the microbiology lab test. Then microbiology case study opens on the fourth, due the 18th, so do that over the break.
Oh my god, wait, they've just released an email about doing honors.
Oh yeah, I saw that notification.
I'm gonna break, I'm gonna pee, oh my god.
Guys, I wanna show you this notification. Congrats, your channel has hit its first hundred subscribers.
Congrats.
Congrats to me.
Me gone unsubscribe.
Please don't.
Here baby.
Thanks to the 100 people who like to watch this. Watch my ugly mug. You're all much appreciated.
Where are you going?
True love right here. Clea, what brand's your sweater?
Yeah, what brand? I've got Adidas on, what have you got on?
What's up guys, it's actually really late, it's like 11:30. I have a pelvic ultrasound tomorrow just to check out my IDG because it's been causing me pain and some bleeding, which is like normal. But the circumstances of the bleeding are like not normal, so my GP just wants to check it out. Thanks for coming along today for another like full day of study. I'm so sorry, these vlogs are so boring and the weather is so nasty. So it's not even like I can get outside and do fun stuff, but it has meant I've been really productive at home doing uni work. Love you all, see you tomorrow, bye. Good morning guys, how's it going? It's Wednesday, how's it going? It's Wednesday. I've got an ultrasound in an hour, like a pelvic one, so I need to drink heaps of water. So I'm just trying to down that real quick. It's actually the first like really nice day I've woken up to in a few days. How good. On my face today, I have a tiny bit of RMS Beauty Uncover Up Concealer, tiny bit of the Kevanac one mascara and just balm de rose. I literally feel like a criminal, oh, and this get up. Major criminal vibes. What's up guys? I'm here, I've arrived, I'm a little bit early, so I'm just gonna hang out for a few minutes because I don't wanna put this on yet because it's so hot. Alright, let's head in, I'll see you guys after the ultrasound. Guys, the radiologist I had was so kind, so nice. But yeah, so I'm gonna head home now and get the day started, it's like 10:40. What's up guys, coming at you from a terrible angle, but that's all good. I'm just gonna poach some apples. I'm just gonna peel and cut them up first and so that I have them for porridge for the next few days to put on top of my porridge. I really like stewed apple. What's up guys, it's almost three o'clock. I feel really like tired and have a bit of headaches. So I think I'm just gonna lie down for a little bit and then do a lecture and then take the dog for a walk, I'm thinking. What's up guys, I just had like a half an hour nap. I feel good, but I really am not in the mood for uni. Like I just don't feel like it and I don't wanna do it and I just, I'm having one of those days where uni is like the last thing I wanna do. Let's go to the beach, beach, let's just get away. What's up guys, I look really red. I'm gonna go head to bed now. I'm sorry for like the lack of content tonight. I literally like lay on the couch and watch some TikToks. I've had a really like bleh day. See you tomorrow, bye. Good morning guys, it's Wednesday. My skin's still looking like really red. I'm not really sure what the issue is, but that's all good. Um, I'm just heading out to go for a walk up One Tree Hill with Summer this morning. Well, it's Cam's birthday, so I spent the morning with him, so I haven't actually really vlogged. But now I've put the dog and we're gonna go walk up One Tree Hill. And we're gonna have a good morning. We're gonna get some exercise this morning and then we're gonna smash out some productive uni stuff today. So that's the plan and I will see you guys in a bit. Good morning. Good morning my baby. Who's this? Who's humming? Is Auntie Summer coming? Is Auntie Summer coming? Is Auntie, oi.
Crazy little dog, what are you doing back in me?
Who came to visit? Who came to visit?
That's a lot, that's a lot of dogs.
Crazy girl, you can't believe you thought I was a stranger. Can I get a hot chocolate and a grilled cheese with Digimart, please?
Is that a cheese on top of it?
Digimart, yeah. What's up guys? Um, I haven't really checked in this morning, but it's Thursday. And I've just been for a walk up One Tree Hill and Summer and I just got some like coffee and breakfast. And I was gonna go to the beach. I just got gas, but I was gonna go to the beach with the dog because it was looking really nice. And then it started like really raining on my way home or like to the beach. And I was like, I'm just gonna go home. Like we can go to the beach later. And the dog had like a solid hour walk. All right, One Tree Hill this morning was really nice. Um, and now we're home and we're gonna start and conquer the day. So I've got lectures to watch, editing to do, lots of stuff. So we're just gonna be productive. What's the time? I don't even know where. Oh yeah, here we go. It's twenty to eleven, so my goal is to start at eleven. What's up guys? Sorry, I didn't bring you to be productive with me. I just got carried away doing stuff. I finished editing, watched a lecture. Um, and it's so grey outside. It's gotten so grim. I'm so glad I went for a walk earlier. Um, I ordered some, I ordered fifty free prints off Snapfish. I downloaded the app. So if you download the app, you get fifty free prints a month. You just have to pay for shipping. So I ordered like proper pictures, fifty pictures, and I just picked some random pictures from my camera roll to see what they're like when they come and they're supposed to come in a couple of weeks. So I'll let you know how that goes when they get here, if they're any good. That's really exciting. Guys, I just used the Nespresso milk whipper with chocolate milk and made the frothiest, hottest, most delicious choco milk. OMG. It's heaven. Mmm, mmm. So good. Guys, how cool does this art look? Ignore Cleo. She's just munching a chicken for dinner. Well, not a chicken, a drumstick. Just trying to hide it. But look at this. Beautiful. So beautiful. Guys, this sunset is unreal. Look at these clouds. Cotton candy goodness. So good. Guys, it's only getting better. This is incredible. We just ordered dinner from SPQR and dessert from Boy and Bird, the donuts, which are the best donuts on planet earth. And we're gonna go pick those up. We'll leave here in about two minutes. Guys, good morning. It's Friday, the last of this vlog. Sorry about all my flyaways and stuff. I'm about to go and, um, brush my hair and make my bed and whatnot. So yes, I will talk to you guys in a bit. Um, to be honest, it's a really nice day, so I might take the dog for a walk this morning after doing some tidying. I'll show you how it looks. Guys, this is what I'm talking about, making a hot chocolate and like that's an espresso. This is the frother thing. Get your choco milk. The Whittaker's Lewis Red Creamery is the best, in my opinion. Pour it in. Lit on. And it's heating up and frothing up my hot chocolate. Guys, I just cleaned the toaster and removed all the crap that came out. It's nice and clean. Um, we hardly ever use it, to be honest. So I think I'm gonna rearrange some stuff up here and hopefully put the toaster there because we don't really drink the espressos that often. They're like a treat. And see if I can move those up there or there. What's up guys? Just thought I would check in. I finished cleaning the kitchen. I did like a full spring clean. I probably only do that like maybe three times a year, four times a year max. It's kind of like a seasonal thing. And when I feel like the kitchen's starting to get a bit like scummy in terms of like dust and the cupboard surfaces and dust where I can't reach, that sort of stuff, I'll get up and give it like a thorough clean. Um, so I'm not gonna give you like a kitchen tour, but I'll just show you my clean kitchen. Um, I did a tiny bit of a declutter. That stuff there is all going to like friends. Ignore all this mess. I still have to clean the lounge. I moved this stuff, which is like everyday stuff from that corner over to this corner because this is like the busy area of the kitchen. And now this is all open, which is really nice. And then this side of the kitchen, looking super clean. And I've cleaned out the drawers, so they're not like dirty. They're all clean. I put a little bit of padding down in this drawer because these were actually marking the bottom. So I got all the marks off and then re-put those away. Um, I organised this cupboard a bit, too. Got rid of some stuff that we weren't using. So there's a lot more space in there now, which is nice. Gave every piece of glass a clean, so it's reflective. What's up? Um, obviously it doesn't stay like that for long, but yeah, decluttered those shelves a bit. They were getting a bit full of crap. And overall, really happy. I know my kitchen isn't very minimal, but I live in like a smallish apartment, like not super small, but small. And I have a lot of stuff. Like I love cooking. I cook every single night pretty much and I like having all the stuff. Like I love all my herbs and spices and I love having all the tools to cook and things like that. So it's not something I really ever wanna give up, like downsizing their stuff. I consider essential, which other people might not. Guys, I just noticed something. Stop it. My orchid has its first bloom. How good. Look at that. My beautiful baby is blooming. That is so fun. I'm so excited for that. Anyway, I'm gonna treat myself to a cold drink and a sit down and then I'm gonna get into the lounge area. I'm just gonna like vacuum the couch, switch some cushions around and give it a overall zhuzh up so it's tidy. What's up guys? Just come down to the beach for the sunset, for the evening, um, get out of the house. I've been cleaning all day. It's been great. I've been super productive, but this is such a good way to end the week. Um, when we were on our way here, we also saw that someone had torn into our letterbox. So I don't know if it was the postman who didn't know how the intercom worked or if it was, um, like someone trying to steal something. So I need to get the CCTV footage from my building um, and figure out what happened there and get a new door and key for my mailbox, which is really frustrating. But that's okay. Shit happens. Thank you so much for watching this vlog. It means the world and I'll catch you in the next one. Bye.